All right, good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Echols is absent today. Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a core in present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most gracious Father, as we center our hearts and our minds during this assembly, we are reminded, and we give you thanks, and we give you praise, and we thank you for we come together for the City of Gaston to take care of business right and justly. Father in heaven, we pray that you bless this council, and we pray that you bless those that are assembled here. Father, may we love one another, may we be kind to one another, and as much as possible, may we live peacefully with one another. We give you thanks and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work sessions and city council meetings held on August 7.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 3rd through 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, mayor.
Does it do that now?
We need to do that at the end.
Mayor, so wait and do it at the end.
The bill for pending nuisance abatement lien on this property at 2001 Ewing Avenue has been paid, therefore no action by the council is needed. Okay? Item number 8B is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for grass cutting on property at 208 Fourth Street in Nor- in, I'm sorry, 208 Fourth Street North in District 2, Carol Ann Bliss being the last known owner. The amount is $196. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on July 10th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second. Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8C is a resolution assessing a nuisance abatement lien for grass cutting on property at 1516 Alabama Avenue in District 3, Chanister Watson being the last known owner. The amount is $196. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on July 10th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second. Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 101 Springdale Court in District 2, state of Alabama, Henry Higgins and wife Luella Higgins, and rights of redemption of Luella Higgins and Henry Higgins being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burned house. We started the process in April of this year. There have been no permits, there are no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Just to give you an idea of the flow of this process, that particular property, the case started in April of this year, and here we are in August, just completing the process. So that gives you some indication of how long it takes. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 708 Brookside Drive in District 3, Richard and Joyce Horton being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in January of this year. There have been no permits, there are no improvements, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The nuisances on property at 733 Brookside Drive have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 1508 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, Carol Francis Jordan, Carol Jordan Dougherty, and Nathaniel King being the last known owners. The amount is $4,491.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I spoke with Mr. King yesterday and this morning. He is making payments on this, so I'm going to ask that the council table this indefinitely. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Would like to table it indefinitely, please. Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an indefinite period, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Our final public hearings are resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property for grass cutting work that has already been performed, and we have four locations. This is items 13A through 13D, 408 Avalon Lane in District 2, $136; 2401 Ewing Avenue in District 2, $136; 920 Avenue E in District 3, $136; and 1220 Edwah Avenue in District 3, $136. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? So if you would, sir, if you would, come to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
I'm Jack Kelly with Investment Properties, 2401 Ewing Avenue. When was my grass cut?
Okay. We don't, we have anything noting the date?
It's just part of the settlement that we got on the other that we did on the, it's with you. Yeah, it's with you all on cutting the trees on the same property. You're cutting the trees on the back part of that same property. See, I thought that when we did a settlement on that property, that the settlement was for everything that was against it, all things that was against it. We done a out-of-court settlement. They had assessed $10,000 on my property for cutting trees on the back part of my property. I would really like to, because my understanding was that that settlement agreement was for everything that was against the property.
Sir, I'm not a-
I've been cutting the grass in the front, and I've not received any notice. As a reason I'm here, I didn't know, I didn't understand for when it was for. I just want to try to do whatever I need to do to-
Is this the same property?
It is.
We probably need to look back at the place.
Okay. Sir, I'm, yeah, sir, I'm, so we're not opposed to tabling this for seven days so you can discuss it with the pertinent parties, so that's what we-
What do I need to do on my end? What do I need to do?
Who should he talk to?
Is Mr. Iver your attorney?
He is.
No, I had him call.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have your attorney call the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
I make a motion that we table the item B for seven days. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution numbered 5B for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
All right, and that's 13B, correct?
I'm sorry. I read, I read. We did the wrong thing. Item number 13B, 2401 Ewing Avenue.
All right. Now entertain a motion to adopt the resolutions addressing items 13A, C, and D.
So moved. Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Let's see, item number 14 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of maintenance of roadways and right-of-way. This is for roadways and right-of-way located at the Gaston Commons Development situated off of Highway 77 between Airport Road and Transport Street. The city will entertain, I'm sorry, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an item that I am very happy and highly favored to present this morning.
Oh, right.
I have two items.
Amen.
I'd like to put them together. One is an ordinance conveying property to Cook Foods, and the other one is authorizing tax abatement agreement with Cook Foods of Gaston LLC for major additions. I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance and the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consent.
And I move for adoption because it's in District 1.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Yes, at this time, the mayor has a presentation, and it will go from there.
We're proud to announce Cook Foods, Gaston Complex, the manager, Mr. Harold Hunt, and the vice president, senior vice president, Matthew Herman. Would y'all come up, please, sir? Cook Foods announces an $80 million plant expansion in Gaston with a new $80 million expansion to their existing Gaston complex. Cook Foods will operate one of the largest poultry processing plants in the United States. The City of Gaston's Economic Development Team and Gaston Industrial Development Board Authority partnered by Cook, partnered with Cook Foods to bring a significant expansion that adds 30% to their production capacity. The economic impact of Cook Foods' expansion will be immediate and drastic. With construction starting this month, the expansion will add 200 new jobs and 100 in the first year. Edwah County, we directly receive a benefit of 214,000 through sales and tax use, construction of the facility. In addition to the many new good jobs, the local community will receive a boost through a $4.8 million payroll of the facility that will turn over in the local economy several times. Education will receive the most significant impact with the state, county, and city school systems receiving $4 million over 10 years. The City of Gaston will receive $1 million over 10 years. The Cook Foods' expansion is a great benefit to the residents of Gaston, Edwah County, and surrounding areas. This investment in industrial development is possible through the relationship of Cook Foods' team, the Industrial Development Authority, and the City of Gaston. So I'd like to thank Governor Ivey and her administration for their support on the project, and I'm going to ask the Cook Foods representatives to say if you were.
Thank you, Mayor. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here today and the opportunity to expand this complex in this Gaston facility. It has been a, we've been here with Cook Foods, Gaston 11, about 11 and a half years, and seen a lot of growth. It's going to mean a lot of jobs to the, to the community. It's going to mean a lot of opportunities for poultry growers in the country, and we certainly appreciate.
So for those who say there's no jobs, put your working shoes on and go over there and apply. Amen.
I would just like to recognize Mr. Green, if you'll come up, if you want to say something, there's an economic developer person in the mayor's office is Frankie Davis, and so we appreciate them for what they've done, because they were very much a part of this. So if you'll just come up and just emphasize the fact that education will get a big chunk of this money, and that Gaston will benefit from it.
And while they come, and you don't have to go over there, you can go up to the Senior Activity Center and fill out an application. We have a job fair going on, and they are there. Cooks is there.
Bill, Bill's the director with IDA. Worked on this project and multiple projects all the time, but one of the greatest benefits to an industrial project of this nature is the public education. And it takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot of investment from the company, and we appreciate their thoughtfulness in investing in this, in this community, and it takes a lot of job training along the way. So you have a lot of people, including the mayor and council, that invest in IDA as well as what we do with the city, that allows these kind of job announcements to happen. Thank you.
We're proud that Cook is choosing to come to Gaston. They had several choices, they were looking at several sites, and Gaston was their choice. And they're very happy, from what I understand, they're very happy with Gaston, obviously. They're bringing jobs, and we are very fortunate to have them in our community and as an industrial unit within our, within the City of Gaston and Edwah County. We thank you for what you're doing for the, for the city and the county, and for everyone as a whole. Thank you very much.
And as Bill said, the city and the county, the State Board of Education, the Edwah County Board of Education, and the Gaston City Board of Education all benefit from the educational taxes produced by this project. And the largest beneficiary is the county board of education, which is because of the population and number of students in the school system. So we all benefit as a community, and Gaston's proud to continue to invest in infrastructure so that companies like Cook Foods are willing to invest here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. While we're still in the discussion, I'd like to take the opportunity to embarrass a dear friend of mine, Matthew Herman, who's a, who's been a part of that operation for many years, off and on. So do appreciate you having faith in the City of Gaston to partner with us, and we're excited about what's happening out there. So we do appreciate it, definitely. All right. Entertain, I'm sorry, call for the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance and the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have asked for unanimous consent to hear a resolution authorizing a contract between the City of Gaston and Edwah County Commission for electronic equipment for our voting that's coming up on the 28th.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is money that will pay the voting machines to be used by the City of Gaston in their city election coming up on the 28th of August.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
Mr. President, I do have a few announcements regarding our upcoming city elections and the election process. Absentee voting is ongoing, and we have applications for absentee ballots in the city clerk's office. You can call 549-4517 for information, or you can come to room 401 here in City Hall. Our regular office hours are from 8 to 4:30. And the application for absentee voting is also available on the city's website. If you go to www.cityofgaston.com, and you click on City Services, City Clerk, and Absentee Voting, that gets you directly to the application form. The deadline to apply for an absentee ballot is Thursday, August 23rd, and on that day we will remain open until 5:00 PM to comply with state law. And also, state law gives the reasons that a voter may apply for an absentee ballot. Some of those, or the listed reasons are being out of the county, or the state, or the municipality on election day, having a physical illness or infirmity, which prevents attendance at the polls, working a shift of at least 10 hours that coincide with the polling hours, or being enrolled as a student at an educational institution that's located outside the county of their residence, or being a member, or spouse, or dependent of a member of the armed forces. And the last reason is being appointed as an election officer or poll watcher at a polling place other than your regular polling place. And so that concludes my announcement on absentee. I want to move right along to the next item, and this is very important. The Tabernacle, which is located at 1301 South 11th Street, will be a polling place for city elections. The city has not changed for the polling place there. So on August 28th and October 9th, if a runoff election is necessary, the residents of District 5 will go to the Tabernacle to vote for mayor race and for city council District 5 race. And if we have elections in the future, more than likely, the Tabernacle will be the voting location in the future unless that's changed at a later date by the council. And last but not least, we will conduct a public test of the voting machines to be used in the election, and that will take place at 4:00 PM this Wednesday, August 15th. And the location for that is at 145 Thomas Drive, which is the sheriff training center. The machines are stored there, so that will be the location for the test.
Where's Thomas Drive?
It's in the Commerce Center. It's off of-
77.
77 and- GPS will get you there.
And I did want to make it clear, the last two elections we've had on in District 7 have been at two different locations. This time, it definitely is going to be Kiwanis Pavilion. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor? Councilwoman Toles? Councilman Worthy?
I'd just like to announce that we're having a job fair. It's ongoing at the downtown civic center. We had seven employers to, employers to register with over 1,500 available jobs, and Cooks Food is one of them, and they are there, so you can go there and fill out an application. And also, I wanted to, I got this last night, and I want to ask the attorney to look at it, but this was filed, a report was filed, yes, on yesterday, on August 13th, and it's talking about candidates that was, some were removed from the ballot, and some were not removed from the ballot because they didn't file on time their financial statements. But for some reason, the commission, the Ethics Commission approved for several to stay on the ballot, and then they disapproved for the three here in our city election. And these people was running for state office, so I would like for our attorney and city clerk to look into that. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Billingsley?
I'd like to also emphasize that, that it seems sometimes when people change things, they don't inform other people. And people, I got called Sunday afternoon at my house for three, four hours about where we're going to vote at in District 5, and that's when I asked Ms. Ivey that Monday morning about where we were going to vote, and that's when I found out that they hadn't moved it. So all I'll just ask is, you know, just let us know what's going on so we can make arrangements to do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Do I have anything?
Okay. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you to the mayor and Frankie and Bill Green at IDA, but the biggest thanks, I'd like to go out to the team at Cooks Food. Thank you for the confidence, coming together, I mean, adding to what you've got in Gaston. It's absolutely great. It really is. We got a good workforce. We got a good workforce. Mayor, did you bypass on announcing the Thursday night, the 16th, at Kiwanis Pavilion?
I haven't. Go ahead if you want to.
Okay, well, it's going to be a ribbon cutting at Kiwanis. You know, we've been doing a complete and total remodel. Pudak's company did that, so it'll be Thursday night from 5 to 7. And also, I think the Art Association is going to have a really big announcement up there at that time, too. So everybody come out to the ribbon cutting. Are we going to have food?
Yes.
Come anyway. We're going to have food. Absolutely. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. That's all we, my big-
I got another, yes, man. I got that form, but that's a-
Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. Just a couple of quick announcements. Thank you for the reminder on the ribbon cutting. Again, that's August 16th from 5 to 7. Did enjoy the panel discussion today at the, that preceded the job fair. We had about 25, maybe 30 people to show up for the panel discussion, and we got a chance to have a number of HR professionals to actually address questions and, and speak to issues and give guidance on the hiring process. So I was very, very pleased to be a part- So I was very, very pleased to be a part of that panel and be able to offer up some, some guidance. So the theme that, that we really shared with people was, was competition. Everything that we're doing as relates to economic development is in a competitive scenario. As was mentioned earlier, we were competing with other locations to secure the Cooks' expansion, so we weren't the only, only location that they were considering. So we definitely had to, had to compete in that, in that, in that environment, and, and of course, as a, as a prospective employee, when you show up, you are in a competitive scenario. There's a limited number of jobs, and employers are looking to fill those jobs with the person that's going to be the best organizational fit. So just please keep that in mind. We want to encourage people to continue to, to, to keep that in mind as you position yourself and present yourself for employment, because that's important. The last thing that I will mention, and I'm very excited about this, on August twenty-fifth, at Thompson Park, we will be having the first annual, and we're going to make this an annual event, but this is the first annual Movies in the Park event at, at Thompson. So from, from here going forward, until Parks and Rec decides to stop it, we're going to have a Movies in the Park event there each year, preferably late summer, early fall. The particulars are forthcoming. We're more than likely going to do this event in the evening, so that obviously we'll allow the heat to get behind us, and when you start talking about watching a movie outside, it needs to be as close to dark, if not completely dark, as possible. So, so again, that's August twenty-fifth, so that's two weekends from, from this week at, at Thompson Park, and more details are to come. Chances are, we'll have a number of food vendors there, we'll have popcorn, we'll have some giveaway items, there'll be a number of things. And, and again, this is, this is something that we're really, really excited about. And of course, the name of the movie, we, we aren't allowed to mention, at least not yet, we aren't allowed to mention the name of the movie because you have to pay for the rights to do that. So, so we're just noting that there will be a movie, and, and again, more details are forthcoming. So thank you.
I have one other thing for you.
Okay.
I just want to, I'd like to give kudos to you for coming this morning. I meant to say that a minute ago. Thank you so much for coming and doing what you do as H.R. person, that people really needed that. Thank you.
All right, thanks for the opportunity. If, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Go move.